Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order for our board with session. Don't know if you have people signed on, but we do like public input and basically send any comments or anything into John. People look at it. I do want to apologize to, you know, citizens and the board for the election that we ran, the fact that normally I was run by our in health council, but we don't have one right now. And one in Seattle, I should call it, one we cannot vote to replace a commissioner until that commission is off the board. And we had it wait after September. The paper ballots, nothing meant, you know, to hide anything, but just thought it would be a simple way to do it. It didn't make the person being voted on. You can say, well, you know, he voted against me, whatever. So we're going to make sure we go by the book. There was an article in the paper on the board and one of the things, the old manuals, if you can see this, that basically dictates how many commissioners we have and what their terms are and sets it up. So as far as there were some comments in the page, we looked at where did we change a lot of those things, they have to go back to the state. We can get the set up representatives to totally modify that. So it's not something that we can live by.
But isn't there some question about how we might be able to expand the board itself? I thought that that was something that we might be able
It has to be an odd number. And, you know, like right now, we have five, you're allowed to have three, you could have seven, things like that. And researching of more, whether we wanted to even add in the more members to the board. It's really hard to get people to run since we have this the best now.
Yep.
But even like on some of the committees now, we do have the ability to appoint some citizens to be involved in the committee part.
Well, I think Dr. Allen in his letter did bring up a good point regarding, and I brought it up as a question in the past, that whether or not extending the board from five to seven would mean that it would be less, it would be less onerous on the board members themselves on the number of meetings, because it just seems to be escalating. And also that you have more diversity in the board itself. It might be something that perhaps in the future.
I'll try, it's in here and I remember reading that, how all we have to do to go about doing that.
Well, I mean, I don't know whether that's something that others on the board are interested in and maybe to wait until our new board member.
Right. So our next, you know, our next board meeting will have a full class of this. I'll get the information out of the book here and make sure that we have our discussion item. Thought into that. So. Anyway, I just wanted to start the meeting out to apologize to the board. I know that you guys have taken meetings on how that was kind of what fits on me.
Mostly.
Well, I'm just saying, I
Well, we should all have.
I
I suppose.
Like I said, I apologize to the board and the community that should have been served more. It is, but I apologize. Now, so I can move on. So I'd like to call for the meeting order and certain points of what we're going to do.
I guess it would be the agenda item B, board, board items B, that will not be taking place, the swearing in of a new commissioner.
No, I'll address that though. Okay, okay. We'll get to that. I can jump to that right now. Basically, the first thing we're going to do is vote on a new commissioner. Once we vote on a new commissioner, they basically need to make arrangements here with John. And they have to do the swearing in in front of the noted republic. And we've arranged for that. So it's just a matter of finding out what their schedule, whether it's they can come in and do the whole swearing in, it gets all the no rights. So that that needs to take place between now and our actual board meeting.
So he's not sworn in the next board meeting?
No, he'll, he or she will get voted or sworn in anywhere between now and then. So that when the board meeting happens, there legitimately a commission. They will be a commissioner as soon as they come in.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we select Gregory M. Richardson as our next commissioner.
Don't we have to take a vote?
That's
But I mean, don't we, I mean, how, is it just on?
No, I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. That becomes a vote to select Gregory M. Richardson.
Well, let's the motion should be, let's vote on a commissioner. Yes. So at this time, you're seconded, all in favor of it. So we have two candidates. Wanting back that.
One back, huh? So who are the two candidates?
Do we have Richard?
We have Gregory M. Richardson and we have Ms. Morgan Cooper.
So we want to basically we'll call them both. So they want to vote for Gregory Richardson.
I love Gregory M. Richardson.
And I, I would vote for Gregory.
Basically, if you all raise your hand, so that it very dot okay. So there's no sense moving forward. So basically, we will send the note out to them that he didn't vote by the commission board here.
So do we now do a vote in favor of and then say yes or no? I mean, you don't want to be in non-compliance again.
It's a gray area, but why don't we go ahead and do that? So you have to make the motion that
Okay, I will make a motion that we appoint Gregory M. Richardson as our best commissioner. I second that.
Re-discussion. All in favor?
Alright.
So, thank you. So basically, John will get word out to him that stuff to him to come in and get sworn in. He doesn't need to do it at an open meeting. Just needs to be done. And we will, thank you. And hopefully Morgan is only up there too, that we do appreciate the involvement and sorry for the ordeal here, but Okay, so moving on, with Nancy resigning from the board, she was also secretary of the board. We need to replace her to set basically it would be the rest of this year and next year.
Can you describe what the role of secretary?
The normal role of the secretary is there's a lot of documentation that comes through here that we all will vote on it. We have to sign, each commissioner has to sign, including the secretary, but the back page is kind of certified. And that's the secretary that's on. So there's some signature required by the secretary on documentation. And basically, as a president of the board, if I can't make a board meeting or workshop, then the secretary will step in and run the board. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, I'd be more happy to do that. That'd be great. I would be more than happy to do that. Do your secretary.
Love to appoint Eric Anderson as secretary of the board.
I would also want her to do that. I would support using that. I think, yeah, I'm working full time, so I'm just, that's what I'm doing right now.
Yeah, I'm delighted that somebody
Okay, so basically, I want you to make the nomination. One second.
I guess I need to withdraw the nomination of Eric.
Okay.
I'll, I'll start with that.
Okay.
I would make a motion that you go over there and do the secretary.
Okay.
Any discussions for the train room jewelry? Okay, all in favor? Okay, hopefully we got through that one. Mike, do you know, is there any resolution coming from the board?
There are none today.
And there's no contracts to be approved either? Okay, and so basically, right now, we haven't written down a discussion of the formation of compliance committee, but we already have a compliance committee and a board committee. And basically, what we wanted to do is have Shannon come up and just give us an overview so everybody understands what, what you want and what the compliance committee does.
Hello. So compliance program is actually the policy for us. And compliance for WIBI Health is committed to providing quality, cost-effective healthcare and a positive work environment.
Yes. Can you come up here and set up the table for us and for?
Just a moment, wait just a moment. Okay. Okay. I'm ready to take fingertips to my school. I cannot. Okay, okay. The compliance, WIBI Health is committed to providing quality and cost-effective healthcare and a positive work environment. WIBI Health is dedicated to adhere to the highest ethical standards and we recognize the importance of full compliance with state and federal laws. So we have a compliance program here at WIBI Health and that requires all personnel to comply with laws and our compliance manual, our organization's business and activities, and our legal risks as an organization. We also have compliance education that is for the board and employees annually. We have audits, monitoring, and reporting programs in place that funnel to the compliance committee that meets quarterly. And we also have enforcement and disciplinary measures to ensure compliance with a partnership with HR. Any questions?
You know, a comment, I know you have you know, we were talking about that earlier, that other places have gotten in trouble on their compliance and how quickly they respond to that. I really appreciate the details that you've given us and explaining it. I think that a lot of people just don't realize how important it is in order to keep doors open and keep going forward. And no matter what else is going on, we're out of compliance, you know, that's our first thing is going to hit us. Really appreciate your efforts and how detailed and and we did have a question.
Yeah, my question is, you know, more and more of these federal mandates and state mandates are coming down and, you know, and just the compliance committee itself and the complex together. How many FTEs, how many individuals do you have on board to keep track of all of this?
So I partner with the Compliance Collaborative Group. I also partner with HealthTech for compliance. However, it is just made for compliance with the partnership with HR and my course.
So you get, you have some support, but you are the primary person that has to do all of the juggling of this.
Correct.
So we can blame you?
That's why we have a compliance quarterly committee. So we're all there in the minutes. Yeah.
Or you can thank her too.
Well, we, we pay for her, her guy, who's called Lily Ray.
Are you, are you getting the support that you need to be able to do your job?
Yes, and I think with the partnership with HealthTech, Sherry has been phenomenal with the guidance for compliance and really has given us guidance for the program that we needed here at WIBI Health.
So how many people are in your department that assist you?
Myself. For compliance. Correct. But on compliance events specifically, directly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have we done the, have we had the D and B servant?
We have not. Our window is open till the end of December.
Oh, my gosh.
Anytime.
That's what you said last month.
Ready for it.
Yeah.
And we'll, y'all know when they do.
No, I want to know afterwards.
So the other item on here is our committee assignments. Basically, I just want the board to look at the chart we have of the assignments. Do you have a copy of that?
No. Well, there's one over there.
Basically, I wanted to, to look at where you're at on what committees and then our board meeting will go over it. I'm going to reach out now to our new commissioner and I would like to switch him on some different committees. I didn't know, I know that I have you on a lot of committees. I had lied to you, told you it was one meeting and I have you on several committees.
Well, I think, you know, it may be something to differentiate, like the all provider meeting is not a commissioners meeting, but it's something that I think is useful for one of us at least to participate in. And the building committee, until we get enough money, is not active. And there you know, the one thing that has been discussed wasn't it sort of a a general governance committee or something like that? That you were supposed to have or?
Yeah, we still have to check in. But like the compliance committee, whether you want to stay on that or you might cut back on committee.
I have no problems getting a committee.
What I, I would like to do is appoint the new commissioner to take your place on compliance, if that's okay.
When did that start?
I think years ago. Anyway, I would like to, I'll go on to credentialing and I'll bring on the new commissioner there. I've had experience before being on credentialing. There's going to be a change there with the M E C. So I put the new commissioner on, on credentialing. And then I think one doctor Anderson said that he would be on finance. James, actually, I need to appoint James right now to the finance committee immediately for our board meeting. And so James will be wanting to be the chair of the finance committee.
Yes.
Okay, so Dr. Anderson and James will be on that one. And then on medical establishment, put in the new commissioner on that. So I just want, for our next board meeting, people think about it and come back with any comments and then we'll do an official appointment to all meetings.
And I think, I don't know if I'm in meetings, Mr. Bogdan had an opportunity to, different committee meetings that you had an opportunity to sort of see in action before sort of getting assigned, but I still would think that that would be a good idea for a new commissioner or anyone else who hasn't had the opportunity to sit at all of these meetings to
That's what we wanted to start tracking better. It's like I said, right now, the finance issues, I mean, they're really doing a turnaround here on finances. We've got to stay on top of that. And so I know that Dr. Anderson and James, which is a lot of important, they're going to overwhelm, but so like you guys can concentrate on that and start shuffling the new commissioner around. You and I will work closer together on some, you know, where that person can sit in. Anyway, I just want everybody, you, you can probably have some rest. Or meetings involved with that. Health tech update, Neil.
Pleasure. Well, first I wanted to thank Paul Rogers for being here. I think I met with Paul this morning and I think we're making some progress, particularly in some certain areas. Health tech has a a product, a platform that we call Optimum that has four components. And primarily, the one we're focusing on right now is the financial statement platform, which has not only the operating profit and loss statement, balance sheet, statistics, ratios, a few other things that we're trying to get up and running for the board. Just because of the situation that we were faced with, it's taking us longer than we would like to get that up and running. But we're hopeful that probably your work session in November, Paul and our VP of Finance, John Freeman, who has been serving on the committee of finance, will actually be here and hopefully we can go through that document and have an experience to at least learn a little bit about how a lot of our boards really like it because it's, it's pretty cut and dry as far as the information that's on there. You know, it answers a lot of questions. So we're kind of glad that that's coming. Paul has some pretty good feelings about the financial statement, not so much about the balance sheet because we still got some work to do. I'm glad that that's finally starting to come together. Joyce Smith from our staff in Financial Services Revenue should be here next week again. You actually had a pretty good billing, our collections last month, it was close to 10 million. This is actually, I guess, pretty good. So and then Faith Jones has been working with your team, trying to get the care coordination product up and running. And we're doing some of that right now. We're not necessarily billing. So there's some real opportunities there to, to to capture the revenue that we're, we're due. We just haven't been billing. So and that should be, we're hoping to get that implemented by the end of this calendar year. Carol St. Charles has been working with Curtis on swing bed stuff and that will continue. And then as Shawna indicated, Sherry will continue to have contact with Shawna on the compliance program. And then I should give a little bit of an educational thing the last time she was here. We can't emphasize enough how important the compliance aspect is. Plus the expediency of knowing issues that that can be addressed. And I, I think that's Shawna wasn't involved, but some of us have been complimenting her on how well she's been doing in her positions. Thank you for that. And unless you have any other questions, I have some stuff in the executive session. As far as the report, that would be what I have to offer today.
Anybody have any questions?
So I always got to thank Mike Lashaw.
Before we get into the administrative part, to the board, I'd like to, we have nursing represented, we have facilities represented, we have HR represented. I would like to see if they have we've all, I'll just come in, since this is kind of a work session, and we have a board meeting coming up in whatever, eight days, eight work nights or so, this is going to kind of lead to just a couple of Yeah, that's all I want to do. I don't want to, I don't think they can compare. I don't want to be apart from them. I'm asking them, is there anything they need? Want us to be knowing or thinking about before you order them? I don't think so. I think we're active within two shots out. Probably the biggest thing with compliance is that we now have wired bedside medication scanners at the bedside. And so we're seeing a good adherence for the policy. Because the safety is for the administration of medications. So that's positive. Right now, we're keeping our keep.
What age report today, but was fired in the fire, means report our heads for you.
I don't know if we want to hear from Ken because he always owes money for something.
No, I have a small report after Mike and then we might need to pay that.
Okay. You, we have, he did prepare one topic. Yeah.
So we just want updates to board on Siemens contract. So just a little history in 2017. Organization signed a ten-year contract with Siemens for about $17 million. It amounts to about $140,000, $140,000 on a monthly basis. That contract, basically what it was providing was new modalities and imaging department along with service and support for that equipment. To date, we, they have fulfilled a lot of that contract. Some of the major stuff was not able to be brought into our organization. Into rooms being too small, electrical, you know, some of the infrastructure was not in place to bring in. But for example, an MRI, CT. Fortunately, after five years of being in this contract, the equipment has changed and we are in the process of, when we have a mobile MRI, not exactly what we wanted, nice job of the inside of building, but we have an MRI that is reliable and even, you know, providing for patient care, allowing procedures to be done. We are working on getting the floral, the new CT and extra air oral has been down for a couple of years. But because of some changes in the technology, we can put that equipment to the existing spaces. We do, we just had a meeting earlier, we have to do some upgrades, not just put in the new equipment and provide the work that applies to work there. Because of the work being done in the CT room, we'll have to also address the air for that movement. They're, they're, they're temperature controlled. But in February, due to our financial situation, we stopped paying Siemens and asked if we could relook at this contract and try to reduce our costs. Jim Childers started that process. Siemens was very slow in response. Jim left, they kind of took it over. They had sent us an addendum. They had reduced the cost down to about $109,000 a month. And they wanted, they were willing to waive three of the six months that we had not paid for to date, that they wanted the other two months. So basically, they wanted about $600,000 today. I reached out to them and said, we can't do that to come up with some better prices and see what we can do to continue with our partnership. I gave you some options, but we were able to finally reach an agreement. We've had a few meetings, Mike and Paul sat in on a couple of those. Imaging leader has been involved in some of these, but we have an addendum that we have signed now. This addendum has reduced our monthly cost down to $100,000 a month. We are, they have waived three of those six months. The other three months, instead of paying for them today and catching it all up, they're actually going to put that off until March of next year. The goal was to try and get floral and some of these things up and running and start seeing some of those revenue increases before we start paying for those that may or may not line out. Equipment delays and some other things as we work through the construction of that. But overall, you know, we're saving. We have 66 payments left for the duration of the contract. This year, we will see roughly about a $1 million savings by having some things deferred, the monthly payments decrease. So that is where we're at. So a lot of hard work and a lot of effort to try to reduce this cost for us.
And it's really appreciated. Really a lot of hard work on this part. Sixty, thank you to, you know, Joe, always said. Again, Mr. Chad, we really appreciate your efforts. It's not
Again, Mr. Chad, we really appreciate your efforts. It's not, and, and very. Fantastic job. Good team. You know, same, I mean. Great job.
Well, for not there, we won't get to.
HR, there's a bunch of new docs, nurses.
Signing those contracts.
Okay. There any questions?
No, I do have something I'd like to add, and I don't know if this is a good time, because it has to do with contracts, it has to do with negotiations and things that. I was just informed about yesterday and, uh, leadership may not.
Would that be better to bring up in the executive session?
No. No, I don't think so.
Isn't that fine?
Um, I, I was at the pharmacy, the community pharmacy, um. Get my shots and also to transfer my care. And as I was leaving, Teresa. Uh, caught me and said that. She wasn't sure that. You know, where to go, uh, that apparently Tricare. Is going to stop using, uh, our facility as part of the network. Because they are moving to all. Uh, mail-in pharmacy and that they are. Yeah, that will run evidently. And that this is going to be quite a. Uh, an impact on this pharmacy, and she was sort of. Not knowing exactly how to. And where to go, because in the past, she had worked with the former finance. Person, this was several iterations ago. And that, um. Uh, was just wanting to. See about getting some help. I can send her. Email to me and forward it to anyone to sort of take on from here. If there is something that can be done. But we've got. So much nonsense with Tricare as it is, that, uh, I don't know whether or not anything can be done about it. So. I would like to get it off of my list. And hand it over to where it belongs somewhere.
We, we're totally aware of what you're doing. Thank you. She reports over to me, but she's out of town. I'll contact her and let her know.
Shall I send this email to you then?
Yes, and this is, it's kind of fast, making it to this about Friday.
Yeah.
That I got administ for all hospitals. In the state of Washington, it's not just our pharmacy or our hospital. All, all hospital, vacant pharmacy, all pharmacies. Wherever they are, um, they have a, a buy for. They did out, and they think that this one group that they're going through can control it. Cost better. Uh, one, that position, how I've given them all the volume. Apparently did it out. Um, and so it will, uh. It will embarrass, um, the. The. Washington State Hospital Association, and that's essentially. Washington State Hospital is aware of it, District Hospital, so. So our, our thoughts on it, uh, we had a group leading one morning. Wanted about hospitals is to, uh, begin to do some, uh, some politics to say. This is hurting all of our pharmacies in the state by doing this. So yes, send it to me.
Yeah, I certainly do that. Thank you. Because it obviously affects our, uh, clients also, that they have to change their, change their service providers.
I won't go to mail order, so they don't really have to go into the pharmacy. They'll just. Contact us one of the.
Okay, yeah, I mean, mail order is fine, but you'd like to have some option. And where that mail order service is available.
And we can do mail order. So, uh, it's, uh, and most of our pharmacies can do mail order. Anyway, that's, uh, that was a bidding process that we were not asked to bid on, the small pharmacies with the big, big boys.
Yeah, well, you know, it seems like she just wasn't aware of all of this thing on this, this other level that was going on.
And we, we've not had that until, uh.
Yeah.
Work time. We'll be absolutely.
Paul. Thank you, Ron. So, uh, with respect to next year's budget, uh, much work has been done and. Much remains to be done. I'm looking at a budget calendar here, and there's some dates that are fast approaching that I'll just remind you of. Uh, the week of, uh. October 19th, uh, there'll be presentations that I make to. To health tech leadership and to hospital leadership. Uh, with respect to, uh, a draft budget for FY23. And then there will be meetings the following week as well. And a public hearing on summary budget, uh, November 15th. There'll be a finance committee meeting on December 14th, then the presentation to the board for Google. On December 15th. Lots of dates forthcoming. Uh, it's, uh, taking shape. I'm massaging, uh, the numbers as I learn about things that are going to be different. In FY23 as opposed to FY22. So I think we're on track, making good progress. And, uh. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any about that process.
Well, now you know that the responsibility for that whole budget is on you and the chairman of the finance committee. So it's a shared responsibility. I just want that documented that the two of you.
So. We will be working closely together.
Last year, when there was, um, sort of. Massaging of the, of the budget and everything, with some of the estimates of. Um, what things were going to look like for the year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one of the things that I don't recall hearing or understanding. Uh, was, um, what was. Projected.
Mm-hmm.
And what actually happened.
Right.
Of how close those two were, and even today in terms of. How did we meet the estimates that were created by Jim? You know, nine months ago, uh, or where are we on track?
Well, here's what I can share with you about that. I have not seen. Nor do I believe that a actual budget was developed for this year. It's written right now, so there is no comparison of actual to budget that can be made. Unless this budget lives somewhere that I have.
Well, I think. Maybe I'm talking, maybe it's not the budget itself, but the projections of what the finances were going to look like based on. Uh, changes in FTEs and, and those sorts of things. So that we were going to get out of. The red. And that by the end of the year, things were really looking up. Uh, and, and I suppose that that is different from a budget per se in terms of how the money is spent. But it still is, it still is one of those things that. We, we ought to have some idea of, of.
Sure, certainly, and I think I know where you're going with that. Uh, the optimum reports that. Mr. Todd Hunter was talking about previously. That is a portfolio of reports. Um, that, uh, health tech. Uh, utilizes. And is offered to the board to show. Exactly what you're asking. How, how are we doing this year? So, um, I think that information will provide you with what you're asking. In terms of how we're doing.
Well, you know, we hear what we're doing by. The. Cash days on hand. But the missing part in, in my mind is, is this where we had been. Projected to be. Based on the finance people that were here before you. Uh, out of curiosity more than anything else, or. Because I, I remember that one of the criteria for us to get where we needed to be was. An average of, for example, four swing beds. Uh, a day.
Mm-hmm.
Well, clearly, we don't even have the staff to be able to do that at this point. So, uh. Realistically, that hasn't happened. So we might project it, but it hasn't happened yet, and so. Uh, that, that still is a little unknown, um. Um, um. You know, how much we can see into the future.
We'll take a look at this in our finance committee next, uh, week and see what we can. Uncover for you.
I mean, it's.
I was just going to offer, I think the. The problem we've been having is, quite frankly, the financials were. In such a state, we really. We're still kind of. Grasping to make sure that we're presenting you accurate information.
Big, big dabs in lots of the teams.
There's, I mean, there's reconciliations that haven't been accomplished. The balance sheet is still trying to, trying to get that together. I think there's two. Fortunately, the unknowns, I think, are diminishing. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
And I think probably by next, next month, November, December, probably for sure. We'll be at a point where we will be able to answer some of your questions. Uh. We had, I haven't seen objections from previous administration, but. You know. I think right now the best barometer we have is cash. And hopefully, you know, we get beyond that very soon, because it's difficult for us to help you manage. If we don't have accurate financial information. I mean, that's the bottom line. And hopefully that's coming, Bruce. We've been, Mike and, and I have been trying to get that accomplished for. Fair amount of months. And I think we're getting very close.
We made, uh, we, we made a lot of progress last week with respect to. Um. What portion of that accounts receivable on our books are we not going to be paid? And I'm talking about millions of dollars. Uh. I think our accounts, our outstanding accounts receivable is $37 million. And that's at gross, so. A big part of my job is valuing that $37 million. What is that really worth in terms of cash coming to us after they've taken out money for the contractual allowances? That have been negotiated in those contracts. So, um. We made some significant progress with. Uh, net accounts receivable. And that revenue last week. Um, and believing, and we can now believe the numbers that we're looking at are real. Uh, in those two areas. So I don't know if that made any.
Well, the $37 million that we've lost.
No, no, never, no, no. When we perform a service for patients, it ain't bill for that service. And on our books, those services are valued at $37 million. That we've not been paid for.
And, and why is that?
Uh, because there's a, uh, there's a billing and collection process that has to happen.
So is that still outstanding so that we have? With the way that you're trying to work things now, that there is a way of getting those 37 million dollars?
First, we have, first, we have to figure out. What is that $37 million really worth in terms of cash that we expect to receive? And then when we know that. Um, then, then we can be sure about the net revenues that we're reporting on our income statement.
And could we run our households this way?
No.
No, it's, this is too complicated.
And the contractual, you might explain the contractual.
I mean, we don't have to belabor it, but it's, it's.
This is simple. We didn't go advantage, we didn't, we didn't. Yeah, find the contractual.
Sure, sure. When we bill a dollar. Out to an insurance company. We have agreements with Medicare, with Medicaid, Blue Cross, all these. Insurance companies to pay us, uh, an, an amount of money for that dollar that we bill. And what they pay us is less than what we bill them. And that's because these contracts direct volume to this hospital. Which is, which is something that's needed. We get volume discounts for these contracts, uh, that we belong to.
I've just received two bills, one for my spouse and one for myself. The billing was, uh, paid 50% in one and 30% in another.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm imagining that that's what you're talking about.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Now, also. If that bill becomes a little bit delicate, we will turn it over to a contractor to try and collect. And he's going to take a percentage out of that bill. So maybe you had a bill for $100 and. We're going to receive $30 on that. So we carry on our accounts receivable $30. And actually, we carry $100, but we're only going to be able to collect $30. Then we have to pay the, the agency that's contracting to collect that. Maybe we pay 10 cents, 15 cents. So ultimately, we're going to set up maybe 20 cents on that original billing of a dollar. And that doesn't include the costs, you know, labor costs of putting it all together, postage, you know, everything else.
Might as well do charity care.
Well, we do a lot of that.
The medical industry is like one of the few, I mean, you know. Ace Hardware wouldn't be able to operate that way.
Oh, yeah.
Like they sell, sell a vault for a dollar, they want. You know, and so it, it always frustrates you, like I said. You may have $37 million showing and filled out. Out of that, we'll be applying them. You know, and, and then you write off the seven. And it's crazy that you do it that way. That's where all hospitals have to function and change.
Thank you.
The, the deepest discounts are with Medicare and Medicaid, because that's where most of the volumes come from.
Well, it seems like Tricare does a pretty good job with that, too.
Tricare, yeah.
But isn't Tricare like a third less or something like that? Than the Medicare?
Yeah, actually, I think Tricare is even less money than Medicare and Medicaid.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, thank you for the tutorial.
My pleasure.
I see. I think you guys have done a good job.
Got a good teamwork in that AR.
Yeah, gets the whole hospital on solid footing and, you know, and you beat the papers, all the hospitals across the nation. So much trouble. I'd like to have you guys on board and what we're doing.
So.
Today's cash on hand.
Yeah, today, uh. 18.6 in, uh, in operating cash. Uh, 22 in reserve. Uh, just in case, I think that's, uh, X number of days cash on hand.
300,000.
300, 300,000 a day, and there's 22 days of that. And then we've got, uh, seven days of cash. Which is about $2, $2 million for debt service. So.
The 18.6 is the, the working one.
Yeah. Any question?
Any other questions? So I think Mike told it, I think you save the best for last.
So. Just after that word introduction, uh, just a, one of the, uh, from my, which is for my special, the helpful phone. Uh, we continue to move forward, planning, doing everything we can to, uh, get it set up, get going. We, uh, we got a chance to meet with a two of the, uh, and commissioners.
We got a chance to meet with two of the, and commissioners to talk about behavioral health. Vincent Clair and Ms. Spaden went over really, really well. And they're in total support of behavioral health, one of, from their eyes. Major need on the island, they have a sheriff on it, he's very much supportive of the program. And a little spin off of that, and then Goldie was talking to one of them and said, you know, we'd love to. Not have the best relationship it seems like, or understand, maybe at the hospital, but we're not, so we're going to bring that and give them some tours. At the hospital, they have tours. That's, that's maybe why we're looking at, beginning the program in Freeland and Goldie where behavioral health will begin. And when I say begin, we're going to start out very slowly then just move into it as we can find appropriate staff. For, one of our major goals, of course, is to reopen the Freeland clinic. And we have until next April that we open the clinic before we remove the R C stats. And the reason that I say we will open in Goldie and Freeland is that. The R C reimbursement is right at three hundred and twenty dollars. Freeland is at two thirty, so there'll be more movement going on in Goldie. This is the preliminary and it changes a little bit too. If we do the cost report. You know, with P S, it's our data, we may get more reimbursements, you know, based on the cost report. At Freeland and Goldie, it moves on us every year, based on our costs and things. I was talking about this. So we, we just have to look and see where it'll fit best. So I have a financial performance front of me, it's a, it's a draft, really detailed. Showing, you know, where we begin and end over here. And the assumptions are not all in yet, so. You can look at this draft if you want to, but rather not because it's not all getting it, we're building. One of the places we're going to visit off-island next Tuesday, a behavioral health program. Cat was going over in, I think, in, in, I'm not sure, Marshall vacation today. To an off-island site where they're running behavioral health program, you know, MAC program, we didn't first talk about that, so. We will take their experiences, plug it into this platform. And also plug in our chronic care management, dash behavioral health, everything over that. And laboratory revenue that will be generated from that, so. Just giving you just a quick up that they're still moving forward with the program. Having slow, baby steps, don't rush. We're talking with our department managers and the clinics to be sure we have no staffing. Some of the physicians that we moved out of the Freeland clinic. Might like to come back to the Freeland clinic, and they're in other clinics now. So if they do, they can come back, but we're not going to flash them. So there's a lot of moving parts, moving forward, we're excited about the programs, that's basically what we're hoping to do. I have any questions?
Commissioner Sinclair happened to stop by my house this weekend and we were talking and it's like, you know. I told her, thank you, I really appreciate her efforts that she's made for us and hospital. But she ultimately made a comment that she'd really like to see where we're at, you know, not only surviving, but going well. So just an opportunity to, you know, thank her for meeting with us. And, you know, she's really encouraged by the fact that we're reaching out and having a better relationship and meeting with commissioners. Be nice to meet all three of them, but like I said, it's worked out really good to be able to talk her, thank her for. Her efforts she's made and the fact that she impressed us where we're at.
I mean, we're one-on-one right now, and then we will meet with all of them in November, so cram it out, tell them who we are now. As we meet them one-on-one, because as you know, three of them come together once a month as a board meeting. See where they have to go to a board meeting too.
Well, it is an opportunity also that if I get information that I can provide that when I go to the board of health. Once a month, because I do that every month as a representative of the hospital, so that. We haven't been able to do that the past couple of months because of stuff. But otherwise, that's also really informing them about or updating them on things.
Yeah, I mean, it's important, I think, that, you know, we learn what's going on, that we get the story out there to the community that. You know, yes, we, you know, it's in rough shape here, but it, you know, we really have, this place has gotten turned around really quick. Going in the right direction, we're going to be here for a long haul and. It's a good place to be. That if I, we have to make, okay, well, at this time, you know, our, our next meeting is going to be next Thursday. Twelve o'clock, that's our regular board meeting, and if there's anything that's in one or two weeks, two weeks, sorry. That on the twentieth, I got that one again. And so anybody that wants anything added on to the agenda, I'll be working on, I know that. It's going to be a little delay when you get complete packet out, correct? But we'll get the agenda out as soon as we can, and so if anybody sees anything on there. So when you, the first thing you're going to get is an agenda, a small out, you take packet. But it's an opportunity to see if certain things added to it. Correct, okay?
Along that line, at our last compliance meeting. Shannon and I discussed that you plan on, on a quarterly basis having a report from the compliance committee. So that it was already on the agenda and we don't miss it. There's going to be some way of making that happen, but.
Well, at this time, we have Neil out here, so we need to go into executive session. Neil, how much time do you think we'll, we have to announce how much time to read?
I'd say no more than thirty minutes.
Okay, so basically, what do we plan on, we'll be back in here.
Could be shorter.
Inside, and then we're going to. We're back in session, welcome back. There's no votes taken, we're just having discussions. We do need to let people know that an offer was sent out for a potential new CEO, but it was not responded to. And so at this stage, we're back looking and doing our diligence to. Make sure that we make the right move and get the right CEO in here. And so we will be working with health tech going forward. Other than that, there's no other decisions made. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
No, to a trade.
Second, any discussion on that? I'm in favor.